By the way, allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Happy New Year, everyone. The public can access this meeting via WebEx technology. The Burlington School Committee will hear public comments in person and virtually. Meetings are also broadcast live on Burlington Cable Access TV, BCAT. And video/audio recordings are being made. The access number is (239) 415-2667, and the password is Tuesday. The meeting or the hearing of the Burlington School Committee will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting-hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technology problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. If you are participating remotely, please identify yourself by typing your name on the screen in advance and verbally, once you're identified, to speak. We request that you please turn on your camera. Comments and statements are limited to three minutes. I'm going to do the equity statement. Educational equity means that every child belongs and receives whatever support he/she they need to develop his/her their full academic, emotional, and social potential to learn and thrive every day. This begins with kindness and valuing the humanity of every child and individual. So the next or first item up is the approval of the warrant. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Five zero zero. Okay, next up is public participation. And just as a reminder, as I said earlier, statements and comments are limited to three minutes. Whoops. Oh, sorry about that. I've got... Trying out some new contacts here, so... Sorry about that. I put the checkmark in the wrong place. You moved and I put my glasses on. So let's go on. We'll do the approval of the meeting minutes from December 6th through 2022. A motion, please?
So moved the amended minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, count is five zero zero. Now, we'll talk about public participation. And again, a reminder that statements and comments are limited to three minutes. And I will alternate between in-person and remote. Okay? Nobody is remote and nobody is here, so we can move on.
That was brief.
That was... Yep. So the next item is informational reports. Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And as often, we will start off on a high point and work backwards from there. So that high point, Matthew, is you.
Thank you for that introduction. So first of all, the BHS Music Department is hosting another Coffee House performance, and they are really wanting to open it up to the public. It's January 24th at 7:00 p.m. A lot of students will be performing both poetry and song, and it's very interesting. I went to the last one. I loved it. In accordance with my last report, I talked about how we were holding a mock district competition for DECA. And we recently competed at the district competition, and we had over 60 students qualify for the state competition, which is pretty much similar to how it was last year, but with a few higher numbers. And actually, a part of DECA, a student room project for the upcoming state competition is they are holding a silent auction at the BHS Cafeteria, January 26th at 6:00 p.m. It will be catered by the chateau. And there's a lot of really nice prizes, and they're really looking for a lot of community participation. MODO UN will be traveling to Lexington, and they are very excited about that. And the English Department reached out and wanted me to discuss Poetry Out Loud, which is something, an annual competition held throughout BHS where every student has to recite a poem that they have memorized. And as of now, the semifinals are going on. And I would... I personally had to participate in the semifinals today, earlier. And there are a lot of students were really into it. I enjoyed my time, but I don't know. I'll see how it goes. That's all I have for my participation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew.
And who would like to go next? Let's see. Subcommittee reports, anyone? Nope. Okay. And Steve Moran, are you on? He's not on?
He's on, buddy.
Oh, that's right, because he's got a conflicting meeting. Yep. So we'll go past the Ways and Means and any other announcements. Ms. Simon.
I recently learned that the school committee in Worcester had passed some resolutions, I don't know that they're calling it a resolution, to advocate for additional funding for the MSBA. And I thought it would be worth us at least hearing about, and if people chose to, we could also pursue something along those lines. But there are additional ARPA pandemic funds that the state still has. And what they passed was, is three things. So first of all, to advocate to our state delegation for the use of state ARPA money funds, the American Rescue Plan Act, to cover the pandemic-induced inflationary increases in current Massachusetts school building core program projects, that's the MSBA programs. So there were a number of projects that have come up because of inflation, short money, and to increase the funding for that. Their second proposal is to urge our state delegation to do what is necessary, to restore the Massachusetts School Building Authority Accelerated Repair Program, which I guess was left out this year or recently. And the third thing is to urge the state delegation to do what is necessary to expand funding for the MSBA. They are encouraging if our district project was hit with inflationary costs, if we had an accelerated repair project that won't go forward this year, and if we had a core project that did not move forward last year, which we do, that it would behoove us to consider advocating with our state delegation to use some of those ARPA funds for MSBA projects. It wouldn't guarantee us a particular thing, but I think it's a valuable thing that there are school buildings in Burlington and across the state that could really use this additional funding source. So I just want to open that up if people had any comments or thoughts about it.
Thank you, Martha. Anyone have any comments or questions?
Again, I would just reinforce what Ms. Simon said, and just to make it concrete, they're having really real difficulty accurately bidding school projects, and so communities are committing to fund the projects, and then the projects are coming back significantly more expensive. So their state is looking for what they would call some pothole funds. I don't believe these funds would be permanent, but just trying to do that. I think Stonem High School was $25 million. I mean, a significant amount of money. I think Revere High School, they projecting a $100 million increase just in over a year's time. It's really impossible for even the professionals to accurately sort of bid. And Madam Chair, I'm sure in your business, it's just a volatile, you know, a volatile context landscape. So with that, I can certainly get some language together. I don't think you need to sort of write your own. I think there is some language probably from MASCE, and I can distribute that to you all. And we can put that on air, and we can put that on the 24th if you'd all like to see that. We can put that in the packet. And again, it would just probably be a form letter from MASCE acknowledging that some communities are going to need support to complete projects that are already well underway.
Thank you, Dr. Conti.
And it's not just to fill that, but also because there hasn't been enough money in their budget for the accelerated repairs or for the projects that schools, districts like ours are requesting.
Thank you. So it looks like Steve Moran has joined online. Steve, do you have anything to report? Any questions?
I don't have anything to report as of now. I was just looking to get an initial schedule. I'm unmuted here. Can you hear me? Sure.
Steve, please say hi.
Hello.
There you go.
Loud and clear.
All right, good. Sorry, I don't have an update from Ways and Means, but I will be looking for a schedule for the upcoming budget season. So when you have something that's available to share, I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you... Dr. Conti, do you have any comment or questions?
No, just through the chair, Mr. Moran, we will have the schedule to you on January 24th, our next meeting.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, next item up is learning, equity, and thriving. Dr. Conti?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
I was talking to...
Yeah, I know.
Learning, equity, thriving, yes, item six, is that correct?
Do you have to go stand in the corner?
All right, no, thank you. I apologize.
No problem.
And I'd like to mix some things up a little bit, but I start by having the High School Program of Studies. This is an annual conversation with the high school in regards to their program. We make changes every year. And with some of the questions that were asked by committee members, Mark, Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Adabato will discuss some courses don't run every year. We can have those conversations there. And because the high school, Miss Purchase, will be talking about a later agenda item, I'll probably, Madam Chair, ask you to move that up. But this agenda item is the Program of Studies. Again, our annual conversation. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Sullivan.
Great. And Mr. Adabato.
And Mr. Adabato.
Good evening. Thank you. As we do every year, we're already at the high school planning for next school year. And the beginning of that is the development of the Program of Studies. And as soon as that is approved, we get into the course selection for eighth, ninth, and 10th and 11th graders currently at the high school. So as part of that process, yearly, we come and we talk to you about modifications and changes to the program. That includes some additional, some new proposed courses, some courses that are being modified and taken out, and then a couple of policy changes, AP and dual enrollment weight change, as well as graduation requirement change that we've proposed this year. So we'll go through some of those, and as always, we're happy to answer any questions that you might have. So for new courses, for 23, 24, we do have a Writing Fellows class that has been in our Program of Studies for several years now. It's been a successful program and course that is that Ms. Matana, English teacher at the high school oversees. They're proposing Writing Fellows I and II, and it's intended for students who wanted to continue their work in the Writing Fellows program. I won't read the whole description, too. You have it in front of you. Another new course is yearbook production. There are several districts around us that have yearbook as a course at their high school. It is a major undertaking, putting the book together every year. And there's all sorts of different elements from photography and marketing, page layout design. So the course will encompass a lot of different activities that the students would partake. Ms. Lee is the teacher who would oversee that, and she's excited to have that as an offering for students to sign up for. Fundamentals of Business in a Global Environment. This is an additional course. Dr. Conti put us in touch with LaSalle University. Mrs. Anderson and Ms. Truvey have been working to develop this course in conjunction with them. So it's an additional secondary university, in addition to UMass Boston and Middlesex. That will be a dual enrollment offering for our students, so we're excited to get that in. Then Animal Care and Management. This would be a student internship program that Ms. Pavelcheck has run at the Science Center for a lot of years, and she wanted to formalize it so the students could have a more consistent experience. So I think everyone's familiar with the Science Center that is located here at the high school. They really do a lot of K-5 curriculum work, and it has been a nice thing for our students to have access to. In the past, they've had to take it in lieu of a study hall as a field study. So this would be a course that they could actually sign up and take with Ms. Pavelcheck in the Science Center. And she's looking to just formalize the process for the students that are interested in doing that. And then the last one is sculpture. And a little different than ceramics, I think they get into some more niche projects than ceramics do, constructing, carving, modeling, casting, and assembling. We have Ms. Chasm as a new teacher in the Art Department, and this is more in line with what she wants to teach. So as new instructors, new educators come in, this is a type of course that would change to meet her strengths that she could offer the students.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. So I'm going to jump in, and Mr. Sullivan talked about the new courses. I'm going to talk about some courses that are going to be removed from the Program of Studies. Typically, courses are removed because of low or no enrollment for a number of years. And oftentimes, when a course is removed, in some cases, a department head will then add a course back in, or that section, again, where it hasn't run in several years, it really wouldn't have much of an impact on current sections in moving forward next year. The list of courses not offered are listed there. The Graphic Narratives Course, Art of Argument, Python for Programming. Database Management has probably been in the Program of Studies for a good decade now without actually ever running. I think that course is somewhat obsolete. Classical Roots of Western Civilization, International Studies. And Mr. Rakovic tried a studio art course last year that was a semester version, and he's actually has a full-year version of that class, so the half-year is going to be removed, but the full-year experience will stay. And so, you know, the good thing is, here at Burlington High School, with the support the teachers have and the department heads have, they're able to offer some of these courses. And some do run, some of the new courses will run each year, but it really gives them an opportunity to expand within their departments and allows teachers to kind of expand in their areas of expertise. So although these classes are coming out, please know there are other offerings that students have the opportunity for. We have several modifications as well for next year. A modification would just be existing courses that are either renamed or restructured in some way. We have two English classes listed here. This year, these, or previously, these courses were run as standalone courses for grade nine, grade 10, grade 11, and grade 12. But due to the very, very low number of students in that class, and the opportunity for a special ed teacher and a regular ed teacher to teach together, the course numbers were still very manageable by combining two courses, if that makes sense. So the curriculum is able to be differentiated, accommodations are able to be provided, and within those courses, I would say there's not more than five or six kids. But they are special education courses, so we have to provide that service. We are going to be adding an honors public speaking class. We've offered public speaking for years and years, as you all know. And whenever we offer an honors version of a course, it has to be, it has to start with an incoming class. Reason being is if I'm right now, say, a junior taking CP, next year, if we were to let all students take honors, another student could potentially take that honors class and at the opportunity to get honors credit. Whereas if I was as a junior, I didn't have that opportunity, so if that makes sense. So we start with any certain types of offerings. Years ago, we eliminated class rank. We start with an incoming class, so everyone's clear right from the get-go. So that's why that particular course is starting with an incoming freshman class. Couple name changes that you can see there. Tech Integration is going to be Tech Exploration. That's the course taught by Mr. Wong. Computer Graphics, Ceramics have name changes. Entrepreneurialship will still run, but now it's Startup Business Applications. So I think, you know, teachers put a lot of time and effort into these courses, not just the descriptions, but the names. I think they want to try to entice students to take their courses.
So the next couple are modifications to more policy types of issues in the Program of Studies. The first is with Advanced Placement and Dual Enrollment. And over the last several years, during COVID, during the pandemic, we paused the policy that required all students to take the Advanced Placement test if they signed up for the course. When we did that, it generated a lot of conversation amongst students and educators at the high school. So over the last three years, really, we've, with the leadership team at the high school, teachers of AP and students have had conversations about requiring students to take the test. And I identified some of the concerns that have come up. I would say the primary one, the most common one that we hear is the cost associated with taking the test, that it's an unfunded mandate that we give to kids. And it is a financial burden for a lot of families, whether it's one or five AP classes that they're taking. And we don't have an identified funding source to pay for the test for kids. Educator preference, there are different courses where students might take it once, not necessarily students who are taking four or five, but senior year might take, you know, an environmental science AP class, more for the rigor and the experience to get exposure to what an advanced placement class might look like. But they don't necessarily want to take the test. And those teachers don't necessarily think it should be a requirement. The World Language Department now has a seal of bioliteracy. They're looking at that as kind of the culminating experience, not an AP exam to demonstrate mastery and proficiency. Colleges and universities are changing how they're looking at the Advanced Placement. We have dual enrollment that's really growing at the high school that is also offering an alternative college-level experience for students to take. So that and those are the major things, but all those together have led us to the recommendation to not require students to take the AP exam anymore. It would be optional for students to take it. And the second part of that is, as this conversation was happening, we also were getting questions about dual enrollment and how we weighted. All our courses are obviously weighted at the high school, college prep, honors, and advanced placement. Dual enrollment didn't really have a spot in there in weight. It was weighted if it was an honors class or a CP, or if it was an AP dual enrollment. So we are proposing that dual enrollment courses be weighted the same as AP because they're both college-level experiences for students, so we feel like the weights should be the same. This change would impact incoming class, freshman class, 2026 and beyond, just to make it equitable for students who have already taken these types of classes here at the high school, so it wouldn't affect GPAs, opportunities for distinction to graduation, et cetera. The second thing is the digital citizenship requirement. Seven, eight years ago, it was quite a few years ago, we created this requirement that all seniors had to audit this course by the end of their sophomore year. To be honest, it has become quite burdensome for us to oversee. I'm not sure the level of seriousness that students have gone through it. More importantly, in a lot of our courses, social media, appropriate use, digital citizenship, effective use of technology is being integrated in kind of daily experiences with students and teachers. So we feel like the information that they were getting out of the audit that they had to do, the course audit, they're kind of living that on a daily basis in the curriculums and in the courses they have at the high school. So the necessity for us to continue to require our students to do this really didn't make a lot of sense anymore at this point. So that's the reason that we're proposing eliminating that particular course as a graduation requirement moving forward. I think that's all the major highlights for this year. The cover this year was... Who did it?
Thank you both.
I don't have the name in front of me.
Anyone have any questions or comments, Ms. Masardo?
First, I want to say that I really appreciate the change in the AP dual enrollment policy. I fully agree there. My one question, and just maybe some narrative there, is it looks like you're removing a few technology classes, the sound older ones anyway, but we're not adding any technology classes this year?
So we... Maybe two years ago, we, well, three years ago, we added AP Computer Science Principles, which is an AP Advanced Placement course. We also have a Technology Integration class that we allowed freshmen to also take. And I'd have to take a look at the Program of Studies, but I think what we, and we, even previous to that, we still didn't have enough teachers to teach the sections that we had, which is why fortunately last year, you all approved us to have an additional computer science teacher. So the courses, the course that came out, I think, was really not really a course that is not, you know, it's just not applicable today. But our existing courses, I think, at this point, really are, you know, covering the interests of our students. And I'm trying to think if...
Madam Chair and Mr. Adabato, I think Shereen Terrell came before the committee and discussed, if you remember, she had written the National Science Foundation grant and was introducing three additional computer science courses over a three-year period. So while this particular Python course is being removed, I think there is another one being introduced. I think there was one in the Art Department, actually, wasn't there?
So, yeah.
Big Data and Art or something? And so you were seeing more technology or computer science being integrated into other departments, so join them.
I'm sorry, the other thing, there were, last year, I just had to look back. Creating with Code was a course that had been created a few years back. There is still an existing Python course. And then last year, another new computer course, which I know that the state of Massachusetts, I believe, is recognizing computer science courses as a science. So within our science department, Ms. Potter's actually started an elective course this year called Data Visualization. So it's actually through the science department, but it's a computer science class. So I do think that we're offering some really good technology-based opportunities.
Okay, yeah, I heard her presentation, so those were added this past year?
Yeah, I think they were, she was staggering them and adding them in so that... Yeah. She was staggering them, I'm sorry, I didn't have my microphone on. The data visualization was sort of year two, and I think there's going to be another added...
Yeah, we've added several over the last few years. So these, this is more of a cleanup more so than a removal. So with the addition with the other courses, it was just freeing up space because these wouldn't run.
And I was told there was a hand up out virtually, but the hand went down, or is it still up?
Through the chair, the hand was up, but it is down now.
Okay. All right, so anyone else in the room have a question? Oh, Ms. Simon.
Yes. Well, first of all, I just want to thank you, going through the Program of Studies and seeing the changes and modifications. And running a high school is a very complex process, and you folks are really staying on top of it, and so I really appreciate that. And all the, I know it wasn't just the two of you, a lot of people thinking about these issues. I actually read some of the department statements also, and I know since the last time I'd done that, I don't do that every year, there's been a lot of thought in our departments about what we are, how we are teaching, what we are teaching, and I really appreciate all the work that everybody at the high school is putting into it. I also think that the types of things that you mentioned tonight are appropriate. I support those changes that you've done. And I just, I just have a little nagging thing about the digital citizenship. What you're saying makes a lot of sense to me. The kids are getting digital citizenship earlier than... The kids are getting digital citizenship earlier than the high school and in most of their courses. And it just, you know, are there going to be some kids who just kind of slip through the cracks? Is there some course that all the kids take where there really is a, you know, even a one-day lesson or a one-week lesson on digital citizenship that is clearly explained? And ideally, not just once, because I know I, as an employee, I get sent reminders of how do you keep your email safe and how do you prevent spam and how do you prevent this? And I do think there's something to be said for having it be concretely in the curriculum if we're not going to have it as a separate course.
Yeah, so with all of your support, we were able to add back in our ninth grade health teacher last year. So as part of that ninth grade health course, they do talk about, and I think I put it in the updates here. They cover relationships, communication skills, bullying prevention, cyberbullying, media literacy skills, accessing and evaluating information just in that health class. And some of our core classes also do components of that. But just those few things in that health class really cover most of what the audit, that course that we were offering through the digital citizenship does. So yeah, so in that ninth grade health class, first year, which is really where we want high school kids to first see that information very concretely, they are seeing that in their health class.
Well, and as you know, through the chair, if I may, you know, things change. There are new ways that somebody's trying to hack us. So as those new things come on, as long as we pay attention to be sure our kids are getting that as those issues come up and getting reminders of it. I'm comfortable with these things, thank you.
We do our best, they always seem to be one step ahead.
They are, boy, I don't know.
It's hard in all industry. And I know Ms. Monaco, you also wanted to make a comment.
Did you have a comment?
Okay, yeah, I have a few questions. First of all, a comment that I understand teachers are like impossible to find for these computer courses, technology courses, and that's a shame. Going back in time, we probably had the best computer science program of anywhere in our high school. Now we can't find the teachers. Next, this is just a quick question. Does the science center class fill any requirement?
No, I don't believe it fills any requirements.
Okay. So on the AP, which is what I just wanted to talk about a little bit, the AP courses. When we originally changed the AP credits from four credits to five credits, I don't remember what the outcome was, but the discussion was that it would be four credits if you didn't take the test and five credits if you did take the test. Now, I don't know if that was ever put in and done, okay.
I don't recall that conversation.
Okay, the original reason why we looked at it as a school committee was because there were some AP courses running regularly every year that were not truly AP courses. And when the kids were getting only four credits, that was fine, it was like an honors course. But when we decided to make AP courses worth five credits, the test was required at that time for that reason. And I understand things change, and I suspect that that today there probably are not any AP classes that are not worthy of being called AP classes and getting five credits. I think, you know, you've managed.
I'd agree.
To make them really strong, good classes.
Just, I'm sorry to interject, just so you know, probably about 10 years ago, college board required all AP teachers to submit a syllabus. And of course outlined, making sure that teachers were, you know, up to expectations. And we can't put the AP designation on the transcript without that. Previous to that, as you said, you know, it said AP, was it AP, you know? But now I think they've changed the process and the policy as well. So I think that was another reason why there was that change to the 5.0 weight.
Right, I totally agree. So at the time, I think the concern of the school committee was if we didn't require the test, then we really didn't know what was going to happen. So now I know, I have grandkids that say to me, I'm a senior, why do I have to take the AP test? You know, it's not going to matter, I will already have decided where I'm going to college, et cetera, and it's just money. And I understand that, and I, you know, I go along with what you're doing. I just kind of wanted to revisit why we were there and now as we expand it and change that. But I do hope we encourage the kids to take the test because, you know, there's something that gives us an idea of how well the classes are strength-wise, curriculum-wise. If the kids are taking the tests and they're all getting ones, then we know we're probably not doing a good job. If we're getting threes, fours and fives, we know we're in good shape.
I was going to add as a reminder too, that, you know, when you score a certain score, you also, you know, get that credit towards college and it's one less class you have to pay for in college. I know all colleges don't, but my point is the ones that do, that's one less course you're paying for and one more course towards your graduation. So, you know, if you're making that choice, you know, to either take the AP course or not, you know, again, we remind people that you might save more money than just paying for that test by not having to pay for that course, so I just wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah, and I would say vast majority of our teachers are going to strongly encourage our kids to take it. In addition, over the last several years, we have not seen like a major cliff where no kids are taking the test.
I find myself offering to pay so they'll take the test.
Yeah, so I still think a lot of students will opt to take the test.
It's good to know how well they did, you know, what did they learn, how successful.
And part of our conversation too is, we did, we did discuss, we'll keep a close eye on the total amount of students taking it. Obviously, if we drop down to like a five or 10% participation rate or something really low, we should probably have an additional discussion on the merits of AP in general. If no one's going to take the test.
And if this is truly a financial issue, we should have a way to help kids in that situation.
If the committee felt like it was a requirement that should stay, my request would have been for some funding then.
So my last point, question, whatever, is on the dual enrollment, to get the same credit as an AP course, I understand they're college classes and, you know, it makes sense, it does. Is there any way of managing or watching over the quality of the classes to make sure that they're really worthy of a five?
Yeah, Dr. Conti would like to take this one, I think.
Yeah, through the chair, and I'll try to do this briefly, so.
Can I ask a quick clarifying point before you go? There, all the full year classes are five credits, right? We're talking about weighting, not actual credits.
Just AP.
No.
No, yeah, all right.
Credits and weighting are two different things.
If you get an A in an AP, you would get 5.0 for that A. An honors is a 4.5, and a college prep would be 4.5.
But any class is five credits.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so that's where I just wanted to clarify.
It's the weighting that I was referring to.
Technically, our semester classes are, full year is five credits, correct?
But we're talking about weighting here, not credits.
Yes, and every school has a different weighting system. And every higher ed institution strips away all that weighting, so it's really an internal view, not an external view. So there are high schools that have six-point weighting systems and four-point weighting systems. And it's just, there's no way to do that. So Mrs. Monaco, again, through the chair, discussed college board advanced placement. The college board is a group that sort of created the SATs, the PSATs and advanced placement. The process that Joe talked about that really was instituted, I think it was 14 or 15 years ago, Joe, where we needed to get the course approved, was really the college board's way of protecting their brand. So they wanted to pay for teachers to be trained and also make sure that the courses, if it had their brand, they would move forward. Dual enrollment also requires a partner institution, typically or always, an accredited higher ed institution. They are also approving the course. The benefit to that is while advanced placement courses really used to be considered a replacement for a college course, now typically, an advanced placement score of a test is really placement out of a lower-level course, but the college still needs you to pay for all of the credits in terms of a four-year institution. So dual enrollment courses are becoming much more popular because they're coming from an accredited institution, and you're actually making progress towards an advanced degree. The challenge is, some of this is semantics, because they're called concurrent enrollment, concurrent credits, because students are earning high school credit and college credit concurrently. They're called dual enrollment credit, which is what we call them, really the same thing. And then Massachusetts has an early college program, which I'm sure you've all heard about. I've gotten questions, why we are not an early college high school? And I have to laugh a little bit because, Joe, we've been doing dual enrollment for probably 14 years.
Since you came.
Right, probably longer than almost anybody. And the reason we can't call it early college is because we offer dual enrollment in an ad hoc way. And what I mean by that is we're not identifying a certain group of students as freshmen, targeting that group of students and providing only those group of students access to dual enrollment or early college courses as they make progress through high school. We're including dual enrollment courses in our program of studies for all students, and therefore we can't call it early college. So early college requires targeting a underrepresented group of kids and getting them to basically take a dual enrollment course in an advanced way. So we do offer dual enrollment, concurrent credit, early college. We just have to call it dual enrollment. The sad part about that, and my argument with the state, is that with early college, there is some financial support for students, the state covers the cost of the credit, because please, they're not paying for a test. But also part of the high school's concern, which I agree with, is for an advanced placement course with a required test, there's a cost to the test. But if that course is also a dual enrollment course, then the student also has to pay for the credits from the institution that they're earning it from. So they could be paying for the course through Middlesex Community College, Joe, which is a cost of?
$108 per credit for a credit, three-credit class, so.
324.
324, plus the cost of an AP exam. The 324, though, for a three-credit class is incredibly cost-effective. And if that course counts, because it's from an accredited institution, so again, 15 years ago in a prior life in a different state, we were having students graduate high school with their associate's degree completed. Because their last two years, they were taking dual enrollment, concurrent enrollment classes. Joe, at this point, we can offer at Burlington roughly, what, 15?
Dual enrollment courses?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's actually in the program of studies, the number. I think, I think it's around 15. We've been increasing over the years. We talked about AP computer science principles, that's actually dual enrollment as well. Mr. Witten just started a new history course this year, that's dual enrollment. So and then we have some staple dual enrollment courses like psychology, comp 101, that's, you know, they've been offered for several years now, so.
So again, to alleviate, Mrs. Monaco, your concern is that the higher ed institution that we are receiving the dual enrollment credit with is approving the curriculum to make sure there's their appropriate rigor. We are arranging, we are making the financial arrangement with that institution ahead of time. And for instance, the student who is earning that credit, the five credits in high school and the three credits, for instance, and paying for those three credits from Middlesex Community College, they would get a transcript both from Burlington High School, Joe, and they also get a transcript from Middlesex Community College, is that correct?
That's correct.
So they would get sort of both credits at the same time. We have dual enrollment arrangements now with Middlesex Community College primarily. I know we have one with UMass Boston. I think we have one with Boston Architectural College.
And now LaSalle.
Now LaSalle. And I want to make sure I thank Ms. Anderson and Ms. Truvey for all of their work. They work with the dean of the business school, and they've created this course now that is approved by LaSalle. So those students will get, again, credit from Burlington High School and then would also get a LaSalle transcript and also make that connection to LaSalle. So we're, I think, high schools are doing a great job trying to create pathways. So if students then wanted to, for instance, LaSalle has a great business program, and if they wanted to continue to pursue that, they've already taken the courses there at that college, and then they can continue to pursue that. But again, those credits from LaSalle, from an accredited institution, could be used at any two- or four-year institution moving forward. So while the college board is a necessary evil, I really support the expansion of dual enrollment. I think it's better for kids, I think it's more cost-effective for families. And I do think we can get students a head start on their education after high school, if that's what they're, if that's what they're choosing to do. So, Joe, again, your counselors have done a great job, I think you've done a great job, Mark, expanding those dual enrollment opportunities. And I just think it's a, it's a growing need, more so than advanced placement. So again, I would support the elimination of the AP exam. It doesn't make sense to do both, and I'm hoping all of our AP courses at some point, all of our advanced courses at some point, are dual enrollment and connected to an institution of, a postgraduate institution.
Thanks for that good explanation, I think Ms. Monaco has another question.
You don't really mean eliminate the exam, you mean eliminate the requirement for every student to take the exam.
That's exactly what I mean, eliminate the requirement.
We're still going to offer, yes.
Yeah, I think this was a good discussion, and I appreciate it. And good luck with it all. Oh, I did want to ask you this. On the dual enrollment counting as AP and the kids not having to take the test, is that effective immediately for all kids or just coming in freshmen?
So the wait will only be 2026 and beyond, so because there's already kids in the pipeline who are taking these types of courses for a certain wait. The optional test would be effective immediately if you all approve, so starting this spring.
Well, starting next year, this year we've already collected, this year the policy was still in effect.
Yeah.
It would be for next, next year.
We allowed an exemption for students who were already in the dual enrollment and paying for those credits to not be required to take the exam this year. We did make an exception for that group of kids. So it'd be effective for everyone next year.
Okay, just keep an eye on that, the number of kids taking the tests, and if it has a negative effect by not requiring it.
We'll track it and report back.
That's just a concern of mine.
And, you know, 11 or 12 years ago, we had about 200 or so students that participated in AP, or over 300 students.
I know, I know.
So I think the access to APs has, you know, changed significantly.
I know, thank you.
Ms. Simon?
Yeah, I just want to say, I think that the AP offerings and the dual enrollment offerings are all really important for many of our students and a good thing. And in the back of my head, I also think about kids who are feeling they need to hurry up and do college when they're in high school. And I think about the electives that they might have tried if they weren't feeling the pressure to take all those AP classes, to be at the top of the class or, you know. And there, you know, there's some students who love it, and, you know, and I don't want to take it away. But I also just wanted to throw into this conversation the idea that high school could be high school and not college. And, you know, in the state, there's an incredible pressure to have early college and dual enrollment. And it's definitely a financial benefit for students who are going to have trouble paying for college. I think all those are really, really important. And then I wonder if there's a student who didn't have the opportunity to take an art class or the intro to law elective in the social studies department or some other course that would maybe set them on a career or give them a way to have enjoyment, you know, or meet new people. And I just, I think about that some, when we have these, we have these conversations periodically about AP and dual enrollment. And I'm not against it, I just think it's important to keep. I just think it's important to keep in mind the other things that high school offers that having kids feel like they should be and have to take AP and dual enrollment kind of, it it gets kind of pushed to the side, I think, and I just wanted to.
I'll just comment quickly. I don't disagree, and I will give Mr. Otobato and the counseling department credit. They work really hard with our students when they come into the high school, um really when they're in eighth grade, uh with the middle school councils as well, uh talking about a four-year plan, uh talking about pursuing interest, having balance. Obviously, social, emotional well-being for our students is a is a top priority, uh so encouraging kids to have balance with their with their course load and their workload. Um, so they do do a really good job of pushing kids to expand their interests and try different things, um, and and a lot of our kids do 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 that, so um credit to Joe and the and the councils for doing that.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments or questions? Okay, and I'm guessing if we move to the next one, you're going to take something out of order as well.
Well, is this the first reading?
Uh, it's first reading, yes. So there's no vote. Joe, you had some M-CAS graduation requirement information. Were you going to go over that briefly?
I'll bring the room down with M-CAS.
There there are some changes, so just to.
Yeah, it's really just uh around the scoring. So Desi had um voted to allow the class of twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. The threshold is a little bit different for passing. It's a lower threshold.
Because of COVID?
Due to the pandemic, yes. Um, and so as you may know, um, the English, math, and science have been a graduation requirement for a number of years. For this current senior class, they did not need to take and pass a science M-CAS. They just needed to take an M-CAS-approved course, which we offer. So that was the difference for this year's seniors. They just needed math and English. They didn't need science. So juniors, which is class of twenty, twenty-four, and and twenty, twenty-five, they're back in the normal swing of of M-CAS, math, English, and science, but the score threshold we included in the program of study um is is different than it's been in years past. Um, and then, as you can see, the score threshold changes with the class of twenty, twenty-six. It's going to increase, and then with the class of twenty, twenty-thirty-one, uh, it's going to increase again. So I think that's just Desi's way of kind of um making sure, in in their eyes, that schools are adhering to the curriculum that's offered through the M-CAS and that teachers are teaching to the, you know, uh, to the test, really, to some extent. Um, and so that's all. We just, we include the M-CAS every year in the program of studies. We just had to add this this new information. We thought it was important to share that with you.
Thank you. Anyone else or anything else that you wanted to add?
No, ma'am. I'll try to move things.
Just briefly, I I if I could.
Yes, Ms. Simon.
Um, I I actually spoke with Commissioner Riley at the MAS C conference because I was concerned about how, especially this year, when kids are still feeling the wump of the learning loss or pandemic or whatever, however it hit them, that the Board of Education uh did raise the required threshold for M-CAS scores. And he actually said that he was requesting it for only one area because he thought there was some statistical thing, and I didn't quite get that, but he was not in favor of it, but the board pushed it. So I'm, I just, I wasn't real happy to hear that, but this is where we are, and we will continue to follow through with it, but I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, Ms. Simon. Dr. Conti?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just in honor of their time, if I could invite up Ms. Purchase to join. Joe, you're welcome to stay, or if you want to. Madam Chair, with your permission, I just wanted to do um the DEI update briefly, just because there's a lot happening at the middle school and the high school, and I wanted um Ms. Purchase and Mr. Sullivan to be here for that.
Okay.
And so um the um, there's a lot going on. This is not a comprehensive um update, but I wanted to um highlight uh some specific activities that are um that are happening. Um, I tried to break it into learning equity and um thriving initiatives, and you have to ask why those three things. I would be very disappointed.
Why those three things?
Yeah, but uh uh Under Learning, I know that Mark and Carrie are working with the Highlander Institute and had a focus of professional development at the secondary level on uh cultures culturally responsive uh teaching and support for their staff. So I just wanted them to um spend a few minutes talking about um their experiences with the Highlander Institute and um the work that has been ongoing. And then our conversations are if it's, you know, been really effective and we get positive feedback from staff, it may be something we want to expand again to the elementary schools because this is needs a sustained effort um over time. So this is not a one-shot sort of thing. So with that, um, Mark and Carrie, I'll turn it over to you.
So over the summer, um, Ms. Purchase and myself, um, were having a conversation about professional development for our schools, and um we really saw a void um in in something um robust for our our teaching staff and our educators, as well as our leadership teams at the at the two schools. So um Carrie had heard of the Highlander Institute, so um we looked into them. We had a couple of meetings. Um, Dr. Conti um very graciously allowed us to pursue a partnership with them for this year, uh and what they're offering us um are two full days, both at the high school and the middle school, professional development for our uh teaching staffs around culturally responsive teaching, uh effective culturally responsive practices in the classroom, as well as um leadership training. So they're offering a professional learning group, uh monthly uh meetings with the leadership teams at the high school and the middle school. Uh, and the focus of those meetings is really around how to be a culturally responsive leader, how to coach and evaluate um teachers in your buildings for um culturally responsive practices. Um, so the work so far has been great. Um, our, the high school's first professional day is next week, uh right in the middle of our midterm week, so maybe for next year's schedule, calendar, we can move that PD day. Um, so our first full day for the teaching staff is next week. Uh, Carrie and her staff had theirs uh during the November, October.
December.
December, uh professional day at the middle school. So she could talk a little bit more about how the full day, um, they're all mixed up, uh day went for teachers, um, but that is um kind of a short package. Long-term, again, like Dr. Conti mentioned, if uh the feedback is positive from our teaching staff, from the educators, uh in the leadership teams, that uh we feel an ongoing partnership with them is uh the best route to go, they do offer additional uh services uh that include really looking at uh student data, um, classroom data that teachers can reflect on about how their uh performance is in relation to how students are feeling in their classrooms, um, you know, through student experience surveys, uh and also, uh, I know Dr. Conti's going to talk about it later, but uh school climate, um parental uh feedback, parental experiences. They do offer a a bunch of different services that we can expand upon um if we do decide to move forward uh after this year.
Thank you. Um, so the first day of full-day training for the entire faculty and staff was uh very well-received by the middle school faculty. Um, it provided an overview of their, and I'm going to read it off the 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 page, but the culturally responsive um and sustaining pedagogy framework, which is a four-stage model that includes, begins with awareness, community building, cognitive development, and critical consciousness. So it's really taking this idea of culturally responsive teaching, which is is kind of this, you know, kind of educational jargon that's getting thrown out, and it's starting to bring it into their classrooms, into their practice, um and and making it really relevant for their students. Um, the day was um really filled with modeling of good instructional practices and and really helping build that awareness. So as um Mr. Sullivan said, we're um, you know, we have two days. They usually do a four-day training, so they've um really tailored it to our needs and our our time needs. So um they kind of went over the first two um parts of their their framework with folks. Um, and as I said, it was a really um positive experience and and certainly something that we're looking forward to the the follow-up on. So um I I think it's a a great partnership and just a a little different. I I know at the high school, it's the leadership team. Um, we actually asked teacher volunteers um to participate, so um I would say more informal teacher leadership, um, coming in and and having the conversations about how this goes beyond just the one-day training, the two-day training, but becomes part of what we do, uh because that's really the importance of of doing this work. It's not checking the box. It's making sure that it's embedded in everything we do.
Thank you. Any comments or questions?
And again, so professional development is a is a big part of um making sure that uh diversity and equity and inclusive practices are part of um what we do um every every day. And um Carrie, correct me if I'm wrong, but sort of going from the abstract to the concrete for the committee, a culturally sustainable practice, um, an expectation might be um learning all of your students' names and how to pronounce them correctly. I mean, as basic as that sounds, that might, that, so they they go very concrete for teachers so that they can um um think about their practice in a very, I think, a very useful way. Is that, I just, I want to put words in your mouth, but.
No, I I think that that in the very simplest of form. Um, I think one of the examples they used to help teachers reflect on their practice was um they presented um a kind of two case studies, two two snapshots of students in different years, and what it came down to was was they were the same student. It was a different um perspective, um and and looking at it from a strength aspect as opposed to a struggling student who who had these deficits. So um it is really, again, going from the the abstract um to to start having them think about what it is that they're doing in their practice, um, things like using um, you know, you, a- again, using strengths as opposed to weaknesses, using world experiences as opposed to, oh, you don't have that background because you're not from here, um, that that's a strength, like, you know, looking at our our English language learners is, wow, you're already um speaking two languages. That's pretty amazing. So I I do think that it is, it's helpful um for educators, and what was nice, there were things that they took and were able to to bring into the classroom the next the next day.
So again, uh professional development is something that is important. Um, Mark, the advocacy room, the committee met uh those students last spring. Uh, that program has continued um at the high school.
Yep, so they meet uh monthly, and again, I think last year it was more about um developing kind of a foundation uh for the kids this year, so they're going to identify a few areas. They might have talked last spring about some of the the areas that they were going to focus on to bring uh to school administration or district leadership uh ideas that they wanted to advocate for change. Um, so Mr. Stringer and Ms. Belazek are are working with the students in that group this year. Uh, they meet monthly. Um, there's a woman, uh, the, I think, the Learning, Learning Institute, I think it is, that we partnered with them. Uh, they help with the trainings and the um the curriculum that they're using.
So there's also an outside facilitator. That's that's part of that.
Correct, yes.
The um Ms. Purchase, Carrie, has been um um doing a a BEAM report review, so that came before the committee again in the fall, and that report, again, Carrie, should be, I think, we had a meeting last week, so I think in the next couple of weeks, um, I'm hoping that we get that report in.
Yeah, so um we are expecting the written, I think they said in about two to three weeks, um, so it is wrapping up. Um, overall, it's been a comprehensive program review. Um, they spent four days in the district, um, including a document and record review, um, doing focus groups. So they met with current students, they met with past students, um, they met with um focus groups of families, both of students that are participating or um in BEAM and students who are not participating in BEAM. Um, they did classroom visits, both to the the BEAM classroom, but then also through um our our classrooms um in general to kind of get a sense and a feel for the the curriculum. Um, they met with faculty members, um, regular education teachers, guidance counselors, um representatives of of grade five teachers, um, and then BEAM teachers, the current teacher, the recently retired teacher, and the founding teacher. So they did have an opportunity to speak to um all of the the teachers. Um, they met with members of the leadership team, including elementary, um, a couple elementary principals, assistant principals at the middle school. I know uh Mr. Sullivan had a of um informal. I I was going there, I was going there, informal conversation as well. So I I do think that um, you know, it was a um a process that, as they learned, they they continued to to look and and really um approached it with an inquiry standpoint. So um and and really, you know, what's nice about having someone from the outside to do it is is that they're really looking at it objectively. Um, so once we we have the opportunity to see that information, that report, I'm sure that there'll be a a follow-up conversation here.
Yep, so thank you. And finally, um, well, again, not finally, but I said this is sort of a work in progress, but um the middle school has um Carrie requested and has hired a an instructional coach because um, again, the professional development that is needed is not meant to be um a one-day or a one-off, and Mr. Foss, I always look at you when I talk about teacher professional development. So um an embedded coach is meant to develop uh relationships with teachers. It's not meant to be an evaluative relationship, but really work with teachers to help them um, again, in concrete ways to improve the classroom experience for all for all students, which is really what we're what we're talking about. And uh Mr. Sullivan, um, again, I think uh Carrie's a little bit ahead of the curve uh in this particular sense, so um, so.
I I put it, the requested also last year during the budget process, uh, but someone got it, and somebody got it and somebody didn't. I just will remind.
So the the committee will see a um an instructional coach for the high school as uh in in part of this year's in in this year's budget, and uh again, I think the reason for doing it is instructionally sound, but also if we want to maintain um any sort of collaboration, I think um we need to make sure that the high school has their coach as well. So I think that would be great. So, no, thank you, thank you both for that. Um, continuing on, uh, under equity at your places, um, there was a, in our um district planning for success, there was um um indication of an of an incident report protocol. So um we looked at some different versions from different districts. Um, and again, there's, this has been created for Burlington. It is not live yet. Um, what we're doing is talking with um principals because um having a a place to get both um named reports and anonymous reports is, I think, uh something that we are going to pursue, but what I would say is we need to have a protocol in place for what happens then, once those reports uh come in, um, how we're going to, um, who's going to do the investigating, and I think principals um should be involved in that um in that conversation and establish those protocols for their for their particular buildings. But I wanted to say that the the incident report uh protocol or form is developed, and now we're just talking about how to implement it. I don't just want to post it without having a plan for the implementation, but the committee should have the expectation that this is going to be something that is uh up and running in the coming months. So um I will certainly let you know when it goes uh when it goes live. Um, just something else that came across my radar, that radar that I thought was um.
Excuse me?
Oh, please.
If I could, uh, Madam Chair?
Ms. Simon?
Thank you. Um, just before we move on from the incident response protocol, it is something that a lot of people in the community have talked about and asked about. It's something that's been talked about, and I just didn't want to just list it and move on. I think it's really important that you've made this progress, that we have a a form. It's, I I believe, I I know you and I talked about it, and it's similar to the kind of uh reporting that we uh were required to do by the state for bullying, and I also think that it's really valuable that you're not just putting out a form without a a procedure, that you're talking to the principals, how, what happens when you get this report? And how are we going to communicate with staff about how to fill these out and what situations need this? And how are we going to communicate with families? So I'm really glad that um that we've got this concrete step here, and I'm really glad that you're mo- waiting to make sure it's done well, and and I think all those parts are really important, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Simon. Any other comments? Okay.
Again, Madam Chair, I'm just really just trying to, I don't mean to rush important topics, but I, we have a full agenda, so I, again, I apologize for um just moving through that quickly. Something that came across my desk, and Ms. Lamprey does an incredible job uh during the school day, but she, um, as you know, also um is um supporting um her community. Uh, there are free adult English classes being offered January seventeenth through March twentieth, um, and the advanced classes are Tuesdays and Thursdays from six to seven thirty uh PM, and they're online with an optional in-person class Monday, six thirty to seven thirty PM. There's intermediate classes Mondays and Thursdays, again, online, and there's beginner classes Mondays and Wednesdays from five thirty to six thirty at Marshall Simon. So Carrie, thank you for hosting um those those classes. Again, those are free, and um and again, Ms. Lamprey is taking on that. Um, how do you sign up for them? Um, I think you just contact um Ms. Lamprey is what I think that she's out recruiting, but I will make sure that we talk about how we get signed up for those.
And maybe that, how, can that be? And maybe that, how, can that be posted on the, on the school website and sent home from the schools, and how do we publicize it? I know there are already a number of families who have been involved with it, and it's been really a valuable thing. I also think we have another teacher, I think May Lee is also teaching one of those classes in addition to Mrs. Lamprey, and maybe there's other teachers. But yes, we, we, there's already people involved in it, but to make sure it's publicized so people, other families who might be interested would know about it.
Absolutely, again, going quickly, and so that, thank you, Ms. Simon. And I believe also the LPAC, the Parent Advisory Committee, is also an important vehicle for communicating these opportunities. The, also under equity that I presented you a copy with is, we have a new school recruitment manual and a, and also an anti-bias training that all people who are interviewing go through. So you have copies of that at your place. And again, we are, I just wanted to say that it's part of our DEI effort. And I think that we are, again, incorporating both the recruitment manual, and we started to use that tool last spring. I think you all were part of searches where, while we have multiple people involved, everyone went through the anti-bias in hiring training, as did you all. And then the, the hiring process to make sure that we are going through a common process moving forward. I know that's lots of information, I was hoping you could review this. If you have questions, we can certainly talk about this stuff at, in more detail and more depth. And then under thriving, we have several things on the agenda that we're going to talk about, so I just want to mention them now, but we'll get more into them. School climate survey, which was completed in the month of December that we can, we will review. Also food service management, I want to think about food service management differently. I told you, it is certainly a business and operations function, but I do think it's an important aspect of a, of a student's day. And sometimes it's just, I think it's an important part of the day for students, I would consider it part of our curriculum. So while I may not support the nutritional value of Frosted Flakes or Fruit Loops, if that brings some joy to a student in the morning, and with the parent's permission that they can eat that stuff, I think that having that opportunity is a, is probably a good way to, to start, to start the, the day. And so those are basically a, a summary of the, of the DEI update in terms of those three areas. I just wanted to say the work continues. I understand that obviously our, our Director of DEI took another position, and we are talking about rehiring that position moving forward. But that doesn't mean that work in the district is, has stopped and is not ongoing, and is happening at our schools. So, Madam Chair, I'll answer questions, or we can certainly talk about, again, we have to talk about school climate survey and food service management, which are agenda items as well.
Dr. Conti, if I could just add into that, in terms of equity and access, that we started a partnership with Cartwheel, Cartwheel Counseling, I believe, or Cartwheel Care that also provides counseling in multiple languages. So that's something that, a resource that is, is new, I think that the, the first meeting was late last week. I think it was Friday, and we've already started referring families and students to that service as well.
And that's with-
Mrs. Concepcion.
Yeah, and so, again, Chrissy's done, our Director of Mental Health, has done a incredible job bringing that in, and again, offering counseling in, in multiple languages. So with that, thank you all very much. I know it is, I can tell, so, appreciate your time.
Yes, thank you both. All right, do you want to go to food service next and get back on track, or where do you want to go? Did you have something else you wanted to discuss, out of order?
Madam Chair, this keeps you on your toes, so let me do the school climate.
Okay.
And then we can-
Fight about the food service?
What?
And then we can fight about-
And then we can do, we can do the fight about the food service, yes, so we can do that after, so the-
So the district white clermah, okay, the climate, yeah.
So this is, we'll do the-
Climate survey results?
Yes.
Okay.
So essentially for, I just want to make sure that I thank, again, Mrs. Concepcion, the Director of Mental Health, for overseeing the school climate, both the survey and making sure it got out to schools. Principals made time for both their staff and their students to participate, and parents were also asked to participate as well. I'm presenting the data to the committee based on elementary and secondary. We have the data broken down by school and by different students, student groups by school. But I'm not going to be presenting that to, to the committee now. So, so I just wanted to discuss this, and again, the information that I'm presenting to you was put all together by Ms. Concepcion, so I want to make sure I thank her. And, and, so thank you, Chrissy, for doing this. So the Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports, PBIS School Climate Survey, is a set of multi-dimensional surveys to measure student perceptions of school climate. The surveys are brief, reliable, and valid for assessing perceived school climate among students in grades three to 12. Each survey includes a set of demographic questions about the participant, and a number of questions related to school climate with Likert-type response options. Again, strongly agree to strongly disagree, and there's typically a five-point scale. And again, Burlington conducted surveys for students in grades four to 12, all staff, all parents and guardians. Parents and guardians were given the opportunity to opt their child out, and all responses were anonymous. I just want to repeat that, all responses were anonymous.
Dr. Conti?
Yes, ma'am.
The students that are grade four through 12 took it, and the parents of all grades took it, right? I took it.
Uh, yes.
Okay.
The survey wasn't valid for students sort of younger of grade three, so we, we just wanted to be safe and just say from fourth up, so. So elementary, again, I'm going to look at this as a broad, as a broad group. Our student response rate was about seventy-three and a half percent. Because students were given the survey during school hours. The staff response rate was about eighty-two percent. And it was, again, communicated via email. The parent guardian response rate was roughly about sixteen percent. It was communicated via email twice in multiple languages and school-based newsletters. It was also sent out via school-based newsletters. So we had areas of strengths, again, this is at elementary. Areas of strengths were really anything that had a score of three or above. Anything below three is an area that we were going to take a look at, so these are scores over three. This is the student responses. My school wants me to do well. My school has clear rules for behavior. Teachers treat me with respect. I feel safe at school. There is an adult in my school who will help me if I need it. And again, those are strengths. The student responses are also broken out demographically. And so it was a strength for all demographics at the elementary level, but we'll look at that data very carefully. Staff, again, consistent in three out of the four elementary schools, again, as a, as a strength. Structures for learning was a strength, and school safety was a strength across all elementary schools. And then parent or guardians, all the subgroups fell within the strength category, so they were all strength. Again, but remember with about a sixteen percent response rate. And so every category was a strength at the elementary level from the parent perspective. Areas of growth, again, from the student perspective. And, and again, I think this was not consistent across the schools, and it was very, very close. So we're really pushing to say this is an area of growth, but I like school, and students treat each other well. And students in my class behave so that teachers can teach. Staff, again, growth areas. Physical environment, and again, that was especially prevalent, I shouldn't be saying this, separating it out, but at Fox Hill, which we are working on. Peer adult relations and parental involvement would be some of the areas of growth. And then, again, parent guardians, all of, all of the elementary comments fell within the strength, within the strength category. So that's elementary. Secondary, the student, student's response rate was fifty-three percent. And it was significantly higher at the middle school than, than the high school. And students, there was time provided during the day for students to fill out the survey. The staff response rate, again, secondary was sixty-two percent. And the parent response rate was about ten percent. And again, communicated twice, multiple languages, school-based newsletters as well, same as the elementary. Areas of strength, again, students. Again, this is all secondary. Peer social support, adult social support, and social civic learning. The staff, again, strength. Staff connectedness and school safety. And parent guardian, again, school safety and institutional environment. So those are the strengths for those three groups. Then the areas of growth would be for students. Anything that, again, on the Likert score fell below a three on the five-point scale. School connectedness, school safety, cultural acceptance, and physical environment. For staff, structure for learning, physical environment, peer adult relationships, parental involvement. And then for the parents, an area of growth was parental involvement. So that was there. What's going to happen next is I'm going to meet with each of the principals to discuss the data and the outcomes, again, more specifically. And we're going to work with principals so that they will share the data with their school staff. And then obviously, they would develop action plans based on the areas of growth that, that they would see. And then what we were talking about for next year, because this is something we like to do every year so that the community gets prepared for it, used to it, and you all get used to it. And I'll have this all in writing to you as a summary, so you don't have to take notes or keep track, is we want to talk about a communication plan, how to get more responses. And so we can certainly talk about that moving forward. And then, and then parents guardians expressed a desire to have an open response section to more clearly articulate their feelings. So maybe we need to articulate more an open response. It's just really hard for us statistically to characterize a, an open response, but clearly we want that information. So that might be something that we'll discuss moving forward. So I think it's very important that we ask regarding school climate. And again, I just want to make sure that the, the feedback is, I gave it to you very generally, it is broken down demographically. So we will, this is also connected to our DEI work, and we'll look at different populations of students, parents, staff, to see if there are areas of growth and, and areas of strength based on perspective.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions or comments?
Did you say school safety in both strength and opportunity for the high school?
I did.
Okay.
So it was, I think it was a, it was, and it was areas of strength by staff.
Okay.
And then, and parents, and students felt it was an area of growth.
Okay.
So it was, there was a different perspective there, which is fine. And again, I can't thank Christine Concepcion enough for her leadership in making this happen. And again, we talked about our Planning for Success document, we've talked about different thriving metrics, I would consider this part of that work. So please understand that we're going to be repeating this school climate surveys annually, and it's going to be a tool that we use moving, moving forward. Nothing's infallible, but it's, I think it's an important measure that we have to ask.
Yeah, I think the only thing we need to improve on is maybe the parent participation. Somehow find a way to-
That was my question.
How, yeah, how do we engage the parents? Is there another way to communicate the survey to get higher participation?
I think part of it is if they know it's coming, and I think if the community gets used to it, and they actually see that we're using the information. I mean, I, I'm optimistic, so I think that's, I think we have an opportunity for growth in, in that area.
Okay, thank you. Where would you like to go next?
I'll try to get back on the, the agenda, so with that, just at your, the, the next thing that we were going to talk about-
I mean, the next thing down the list, if we go back from the top, is the town meeting warrant. But do you want to discuss something else first, just on the same-
We can do the town meeting warrant, and Ms. Bond and I had a conversation, I think, actually, starting last spring. And the operating budget takes a huge amount of time and effort, and, and the warrants do as well, but in the process, we seem to do the warrants last. And then we are rushed to get the information to town meeting. And town meeting has been very generous and understanding, but I think there was some frustration last year, I'm not the most perceptive person, but even I sort of got the idea that there was some frustration with the, the format of the information presented and, and the timing of that. So, again, Mrs. Bond suggested, and we were, been communicating and working together to change up the process a little bit. And I know Mr. Moran is on the call as well. So this is mostly informational for the committee, but I wanted to tell you why. So our next meeting is January 24th. Ms. Kasha will be sharing with you a budget calendar on January 24th. You'll also be getting an updated 10-year capital plan on January 24th. And you'll have a list of warrants on January 24th. We don't know the exact dollar amount, but we will guess. And if we have to eliminate to back down to a number, we will do that. But you'll have the warrants first, ahead of the operating budget. Bob will be working on backup, and Nicole. And then we will make sure we use the town meeting format and that we can meet with capital budget early as possible. So, so again, I think the, the order of things will be reversed from what they have been. We still have a tremendous amount of work to do for the operating budget. But again, you'll see the 10-year capital plan on January 24th and the, and a list of warrants. It may not be the final list of warrants depending on the resources that are available. Again, getting back to the agenda item, is one of those warrants will be a feasibility study, a full feasibility study for Burlington High School. And so Bob will be working on that, again, with Nicole. And you'll see that warrant on January 24th. That'll be a separate warrant, and then we'll also have other warrants that would be more typical to the committee. An updating of the fire alarm system, I think, Bob, you spoke to me about. And we also have our field audit is nearing completion, and we'll probably try to support some of the safety priorities that come out of the field audit as well. So I just, sort of framing the conversation, there will be sort of the regular warrant conversation that'll happen earlier. But a big-ticket item that we're going to be looking for is, or recommending to the committee, is going to be funding for a full feasibility study for Burlington High School.
Thank you, Dr. Conti. Anyone comments or questions? All right, great. So I'm just thinking I may want to take one more out of order. Can we talk about the tour of Marshall Simon's Middle School? And, because I think some of the other ones might have more discussion.
The tour of Marshall Simon's Middle School, again, this came about after the tour of Pine Glen. The selectmen asked that they see all the schools, and so the next one on the list they requested was the middle school. So Terry has been getting on everyone's schedule. So Monday, January 30th at 10:00 a.m., we'll be, again, running a tour of the middle school. We'll be certainly spending some time at the developmental skills classroom that the selectmen visited at Pine Glen, and that students are aging up now to the middle school. But I think they were very interested in seeing the middle school as, as a whole, so we'll spend some time at the middle school. Again, you are certainly all welcome, I know that many of you can't make it, but, but again, Monday at 10:00 was when we could make that work.
Thank you, yes, go ahead, Ms. Monaco.
So the original tour at, at Pine Glen was a couple of years back. And we had- And we had developed the programs, the special ed programs at Pine Glen. And we wanted to get the selectmen's support in funding them through the accommodated account. So we went on a tour, and it was, it was very memorable. It was, it was quite an experience. And, and they came out, you know, with tears in their eyes and smiles on their faces after seeing all the kids and the programs. So Joe had mentioned, Joe Morandi had mentioned that he'd like to tour again. And so we, we did another tour not too long ago. I don't remember the date, but, and again, it was, it was fun, and it was, it was a great tour. And at the end of it, they said, well, you know, this is fun. Let's tour the rest of the schools. And so here we are. We have, we have this one set up for the middle school. And, but the point I wanted to make was that initially it was to give the, the selectmen a really good view of the special ed programs that they're helping us pay for through the accommodated account. And we appreciate their doing that, and the tours are kind of fun.
Thank you, Ms. Monaco. Any other comments, questions? Okay. So why don't we move on to foods services?
Yes, why don't we?
Okay. So the, the three remaining items are, are sort of connected, but we will, oops.
Three remaining items in this part of the agenda are connected, but we will talk about food services. It's food services management. I want to be careful about that. It's not all food services. Food services management and an update with that. So I'll turn it over to Nicole.
Thanks. So as you guys know, we issued an RFP for the management of our food service. We've received three responses. Aramark, Fresh Picks, and Witson's, which are all pretty well-known companies. And now we're ready to start the evaluation process. I know that last time we discussed this, there was some interest from members to be a part of that. So we have five, like five series of books that can be evaluated. And I know that there was also some discussion last time that it might be a good idea to include someone that works in the cafeteria as part of, as an evaluator. So if there's four other people on the committee that want to be part of that, or, or two. We like to stick to odd numbers so that we, we don't
It depends on the
Have a tiebreaker there. So you'd just, you'd be taking the three binders home in the evaluation forms and just being able to return them by Friday.
This Friday?
This Friday.
Well, we could do Monday if you want the weekend.
That would help, yeah.
Monday's a holiday, just.
Well, for some of us.
Could you answer some questions before
I could try.
Get there? What is it that, that we're asking the food service companies to do for us? And what are we paying them, and where is the money coming from?
So the, the costs, so the, the way that this procurement worked is that there is sealed proposals of technical proposals and then a price proposal. So we don't get to open the price proposal until we've evaluated everyone. So I can't answer the, the cost question.
But you can tell me where the money comes from to pay them.
So we, when we issued this, we requested that the, like, most highly advantageous would be a program that's profitable. So it would be a self-sustaining program.
But don't, aren't the lunches free for the rest of the year?
They're free, but we get reimbursed.
So
They're free for students, but there's still a cost to produce them.
So the money that we get reimbursed, we use to pay the food service company?
Yes.
It, from the department.
Okay. So what is it that we're asking the food service company? What duties are we asking them to perform?
So they'd be responsible for menu planning, overseeing the staff, the ordering of, of all, all the goods and food. So everything that our food service director did previously. They'd file our estate reports, our clean forms.
We still using styrofoam plates?
That's next on the agenda, so we have We have an in-depth composting conversation coming up, so we will be addressing the
It was just a simple question.
Yes, well, we, yes, we are still using them, but we have a proposal to stop using them that you'll see in a matter of minutes. So again, we have to go through a procurement process. I think that we, people were slightly overstating what we are asking these companies to do for the rest of the year. We are just asking that they manage to get us through the rest of the year. And we will, we could potentially do a more in-depth RFP or ask them to expand services, but it's just a matter of planning menus, making sure we have the right dry goods and the right food so that we can provide lunches. We have an acting food service director now, and she's doing a great job. And she's probably going to continue in that role, working with the management company. And we'll have a discussion and options as to how to move forward. But I just think it's something that we need to think about a little bit differently. And I'm just asking, you all said you wanted to be involved in the selection process. And so we'd like you to do the review. And we were going to honestly ask Ms. Stevens from the food service department if she would also like to review the binders, if they want to suggest someone else to, to, to do that work. So again, it's a two-step process. You don't get to see price. You just look at qualifications first. And then, at that point, Nicole will open up the price proposals, and we'll see what the costs are.
So my concern with what we're talking about here is we've got an acting food service director who we're going to pay. And we're getting reimbursement money. We're keeping all of our people, and we're now going to, in addition to that, pay a food service company to do the work of the food service director that we're already paying. So why do we need both?
Madam Chair, I think that's a very good question. I would say that in terms of experience or looking at other options and seeing what we can, maybe the menu options might be something that can be expanded. And I think it's worth the conversation about how we'd like to move forward. And so I think the companies that were mentioned service a lot of communities, and I think they do a good job. It's not about replacing our workers. I just want to stress that four or five times. It's not about replacing our workers. We value our cafeteria workers and want to keep them. This is about sort of looking at ordering, menu options, potentially having more of a communication piece. Parents really, many parents visit the website solely to look at lunch menus and contents of meals. And we're just going to see what sort of services that they can provide. I think it's a great year to do that because the food is being provided without cost to students. But that program, I don't believe, is going to be maintained, even though the state of Colorado voted to maintain it. I don't believe Massachusetts will.
They might. Is this only until the rest of the year unless we are really happy with it and decide to extend it? Is it a contract for just this school year?
Yeah, so through June thirtieth with two option, two-year options to renew.
Who's option?
The district.
So we don't have to renew them?
No.
And all right. I mean, I'm not going to keep going on and on. I, I think that, that our staff can be creative with menus. One, one thing that jumped at me when you, Nicole, were explaining what we're asking them to do is oversee staff. That bothers me. Do we have a food services director? Or do we have a food management company overseeing our staff? Which is it?
Again, I'm going to say it's going to be both, and oversee might include training. That might not be a
Training's different from overseeing.
That might be a bad thing. They might make suggestions as to how to run the kitchens more efficiently. Maybe they have more experience. This is not, again, about sort of management from the draconian perspective of managing staff. It's really about looking at our food service operations from a, I think, from an experienced, larger perspective. And that doesn't mean we can't keep what we have. You all may decide that despite the suggestions, we're, we're going to continue on. I'm all for that. I just think we need to have a different perspective come in. And management of the staff, again, might be how to have organized the kitchens, I guess.
I guess, if I'm understanding, you know, from listening, it seems to me as if we're trying to maybe expose ourselves to something else, that we, other ideas and other ways of running things than what we currently do, and maybe improving certain things. And if we find that they have ideas that are advantageous so that we can incorporate, then great. And maybe we decide to move forward because of that, or we don't. But we still get, take advantage of what we've learned from working together through the rest of this year. I mean, that's the way I look at it, but that, is that kind of, did I say that right? Okay.
Nicole, I can spend tomorrow, but only tomorrow, looking at that stuff. So when, when is it available?
You can have it tonight.
Okay.
So you have your four now?
One, two, three.
I'm heavily interested, obviously, so.
I'm interested if there's enough books. I'm interested if there's enough books.
If it's notebooks.
What?
Is there, if there's enough?
Okay.
Packets or whatever.
Okay, yes.
Because if we're going to include somebody from the cafeteria staff, you know, I don't, I haven't counted up.
So we'll have five total.
You have five. So I don't know if either of you are going to be doing a review.
No, I'm, we're doing the designer stuff. We can do, we can do a sixth. I know it's not ideal, but
I just, I don't know. It's a good book. I think you're fine.
Okay.
So you have the number you need is what I'm asking? Okay. I'd like to do it, but I know I can't.
So we have the, we have the four, we have the five.
Okay, all right. Perfect.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions or comments before we move on? Okay, cool. All right. Why don't we go on to the composting?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And again, the composting conversation, and I have trouble saying that word sometimes, so I practice compost, compost, compost. So the compostable. There's also a first reading of a waste reduction and diversion policy as well, clearly connected to composting. So we're sort of talking about the horse ahead of the cart or whatever, but they're both included here. So Bob, you did some work because the committee stated strongly, or had some strong feelings about styrofoam trays. So we could take one and pass them. So Bob, honestly, go, go talk about, the composting is really twofold here. So we're going to talk about sort of waste stream, food waste, composting. But we also wanted to talk about trays because of the conversation last meeting. So I think we're going to start with the, I hope, the simpler part, which is the trays. So go ahead, Bob.
Great, to the chair. So I'll break it down into two. One is a service and one is a product, right? So on a product side, these are compostable products that we're looking at. What you have in front is estimates that were given to us from multiple vendors. The yellow highlighted one in each one of the items, trays, knives, forks, and spoons, is the quote, or the pricing for plastic or styrofoam that we would currently use now. So there is a drastic increase in the price. If you look at the very bottom in the box, you'll see that it's broken down into styrofoam trays and plastic with one cost. The next one is the compostable smart stock, which is what we're calling the higher-quality, heavier-duty compostable products. And then the compostable one, which is the third one down, I don't want to say the name out loud, but that's a brand name, but also considered medium to lightweight quality. So if we want to reduce price a little bit, we'll get less of a structured product. Again, I haven't a weight scale to say on how great a product is versus another one, but a heavier-duty one, similar to a heavy-duty plastic fork, will break less when you're trying to cut with it, will break less when you're trying to use the fork to pick up, you know, some food. But we could also get samples of all of these products, bring them in and check them out.
We could test.
So again, the second part, which we'll dive into afterwards, would be the service side of composting. So again, if there's some questions on the product side of it, or if there's more discussion, please let me know.
So that was my question about getting samples of it. I mean, can you bring them in so we can see them too? Or no?
I have to order them, but yes.
Okay.
Yes, I will.
Any other questions or comments?
Uh-oh, go ahead. I mean, could we just do the, I think the conversation was to get rid of the styrofoam, right? Like, we could go replace just the trays, trays and keep the plastic silverware. And that's not an enormous cost change.
Yeah, it's definitely an option. We could buy any and all of
Yeah.
The request that you all decide.
Ms. Simon, yes.
Ms. Simon.
I feel like it's a little bit of the cart before the horse. I, I think at our last meeting, some people weren't aware that there were styrofoam trays being used all over, and it was pretty shocking. And I think that's part of, there are so many things that we could look at. You know, one is trays. And styrofoam, in my belief, is, is even worse than a lot of the plastics. But then what about the plastic utensils? And what about the other things? And I, and I think that, you know, plus, I, I would not be in favor of throwing away the styrofoam and getting something else because it would still be put in the waste. So I, I'm in favor of using up whatever we have, regardless of what we do going forward. I think that's really important. That stuff is going to go into, into the waste stream anyway. And so it is related to composting. So depending on how we go forward with our composting, I think if making the composting work means getting the compostable trays first, I think that makes some sense. I also, again, cart before the horse, composting doesn't just happen. Part of it is getting a service to pick up the food waste, which I think we reviewed last time. We're not, we're not proposing, I don't think anyone's proposing that we do composting on-site. So somebody would come in and pick up the compost. And in order to do that, we have to prepare the students, we have to prepare the custodians, we have to prepare the building spaces, we have to put up signage, we have to train the students. And I believe that, from my conversation with Dr. Conti, that we would probably try to start with one or two buildings and not the whole school district. So it could be that we could get, and I'm just, a what-if, you know, an example. We could get the compostable trays enough for the building or two that we're going to start the composting in. And use those compostable trays as we start training the teachers and use, doing composting in that cafeteria. But that we would continue to use up our supply of styrofoam trays in the other cafeterias where we're not composting. I don't know how, you know, and, and so, and again, eventually, the, the silverware and the, the plastic ware and that kind of thing. And there's a lot of pieces to this, and I think it's all connected. There's a lot of, I, I think we could, should try to focus on the cafeterias and the food waste. But I think this is related to many different issues that are starting to come up, that many of us are starting to be aware of. People who used to use plastic in their kitchens are not using it anymore, that kind of thing. And we're learning, and we need to move forward. And I think, I, I'm encouraged that as a school district, we can support this. So I don't know that as a, as this school committee, we should make a final decision and a vote on exactly which building's going to have styrofoam and which building's going to have compost. But maybe encourage compost, but maybe encourage Dr. Conti and Bob to start the composting program, use compostable trays in those areas, if it's affordable, I mean, to use, maybe try some of the compostable plastic utensils. I know in the past, I've tried compostable utensils that broke every time I used it. So that's not going to be helpful. So, and like you were saying, you'd like to see them. So, you know, does it matter where we get the heavy duty or not? So I'd like to propose that. And I also think it's important that we try to stay within our budget for this year. And I know we're getting reimbursements, but, you know, if we increase from a $9,000 budget item to a $46,000 budget item, I think we need to really be thinking about it. And it's not that I don't want to. It's that we have only so much money in our budget this year, and I want to make sure that we go forward, but not to the point where people say, "See, we can't do it." I want to try to do it in steps so that it's effective and we can continue, so it's sustainable.
I do have a question. We were asked questions about how many dishwashers there were in the different schools, right? And of course, you know, thinking outside of the box a little bit, but, you know, what about going back to something that's not disposable? And how long does that last? And can we do something like that with, you know, the trays, for example? You know, and what's the cost of that? Over how many years can we budget properly so that it makes sense that we're not throwing stuff away versus something we can reuse?
If I could just give a response to that one. In a couple of our older schools, those spaces may have been converted into either teaching spaces or learning spaces. So we would have to displace adults. On our newer buildings, they weren't designed with them, so we don't have those spaces anymore in the cafeterias, set up the way they are. So not only would it just be buying dishwashers and/or installing multiple sinks, we would get into plumbing and flooring, and they would just be a larger project than just taking out a hole in the wall and putting a dishwasher in. Yeah, again, we're talking 15, 20 years ago when this change happened. So it's not even like we could reverse it from a year ago. Too far away, and too many moves have happened now to, again, could it happen? Yes. But it wouldn't be easy.
Wouldn't be as right as easily, it's easier said than done.
Yeah.
Right, got it. Thank you. And I thought it was important to at least ask the question. Dr. Conti.
Madam Chair, and I just would like to express some respectful frustration with this topic because we jump around a lot. We're providing lots of information. I think the feedback that we've gotten from students is, especially from the high school and also from the middle school, I think they've done community service projects. I've attended, been invited, and all have asked for some changes in food service menus, for the food that's available. Bob or Nicole, the price point now for a school lunch is?
$3.25.
So please have that as a context. I think sometimes we talk about, like, we're going out to lunch with a $3.25 price point. With the cost of food, we're serving about, what, 2,000 lunches a day, roughly? It's a complicated endeavor. So my suggestion would be, there's a first reading of a policy here. If you'd like us to look at a sort of reducing waste stream, I think we can try to figure that out. Management company, we can have a conversation about can they assist us with composting? I'm sure we're not the first cafeteria or lunch service where they've promoted or done some training in regards to reducing the waste stream. I think that's fairly popular. I think I also want to ask them about menu options and choices. I think the conversation with this committee, and I think I've tried to say this, again, many years in a row, is that the idea that we can fully fund a food service program that's high quality and meets the needs of everybody with compostable materials and a diverse menu, paid for by solely participation, I think is a fool's errand. It's just not going to happen. So at some point, we're going to put all of this together, and I don't really want to do it tray by tray or fork by fork. We may need to talk about the price point of a lunch actually increasing a little bit, or then supporting maybe families because we don't want the price to go to the point where participation drops. But I'm assuming everyone that I'm speaking with is struggling with these same things. Food costs are significantly increasing, and we may need to talk about that as a whole. So I think if we can have a policy conversation, we value our cafeteria workers, the students want to see some changes, and they've been very respectful and articulate about those changes. I do believe we have students who are committed to reducing the waste stream as well, and they will be committed and involved. But at some point, for this committee, we're going to have to say in our operating budget that we may need to budget for supplemental funds to accomplish what everyone sort of wants us to accomplish. So I think that's sort of the level of conversation that I think we like to have because if you all want the higher quality lunch trays, I honestly, that's great with me. We will use up the trays that we have, but we may need to account for that. Again, if we can't account for it in the lunch cost, then we may just need to budget for those supplies. We budget for a ton of other supplies. We just, we might budget for those trays. So again, I'll talk about anything for as long as you want, but I think this is going to be one of those subjects where I think we have to look at it holistically. And Mrs. Monaco, it's your turn.
Ms. Monaco, I know you have a question or comment.
No, I wanted to comment on all of this. Bob, thank you for doing this. How much, what is our supply of styrofoam whatevers, whether they're plates or trays or whatever they are? How many of the things do we have?
We're planning till the end of the year, so we almost have enough supply for the rest of the year. So we're probably 50% of our supply that we ordered.
Okay. Now, these are my thoughts, okay? I don't want us to buy any more styrofoam. I don't really, I'm not so concerned about composting that they have to be compostable. I just don't want styrofoam. Paper plates, they're okay. Plastic silverware, the thing about plastic silverware is it's okay unless you wash it in a dishwasher and heat it, then it's not okay to use. It's, I mean, I'm not suggesting we would ever do that, but, you know, at home, if you have a birthday party and you use 10 plastic forks, you might stick them in the dishwasher. No, you can't do that. You've got to throw them away because once you heat the plastic, it's not safe to use for food. My concern with composting, which we'll get to in the next item, but just to get it out there, is that I could only support it if it was picked up much more frequently than once a week because it would stink, especially in the warm weather. Well, so I would like to suggest two things in addition to not having plastic, I mean, not having styrofoam plates. I'd like to suggest that when we designed the Fox Hill School, we design it with dishwashers and not throw away utensils and plates that we go back in time to when we reuse things. My suggestion, everyone else might think I'm nuts, that's fine. And as far as money goes, I've been on the school committee a long time, and since day one, I've been saying we need to be budgeting money for the cafeteria in order to make it work well for everyone, including, or mostly for the kids. So I have absolutely no problem at all with a budget that includes, that includes money for the cafeteria.
Thank you, Ms. Simon. Any other comments, Ms. Masardo?
I'll just be quick. I lost my train of thought. I agree that I don't know if jumping to compostable right now, when we don't even have any sort of plan to actually do the compost, makes any sense. I'm happy to explore if this seems like a single priority to get rid of styrofoam. This doesn't look like outrageous cost if we focus on that single item. I would just like to say that my priority is definitely the higher quality lunches, which I'm hoping we can get out of this food services proposal. But that's where I would love to spend our money. And then I'm happy to put a dishwasher in the new Fox Hill. But I think we definitely need to move more incrementally than, let's, like, jumping to compostable knives right now when we have no one to pick up any sort of compost whatsoever. But if we want to take small steps, I can support any of that.
Okay, thank you. And like I said, I don't think we're voting on anything as far as composting. It's like, it's just a discussion right now. Anyone else want to add to that, or we want to move on to the next subject?
Again, Madam, my suggestion would be the assistant room attendant search is just a handout with dates, so we can, I'll just do that right at the end.
Okay.
I think connected to this conversation is the- the waste diversion policy. And again, I think the school committee is operating through a sort of policy frame. This is one version that exists in other-
Where did this policy come from?
I believe it was Arlington. Is that, Ms. Simon? I think you had helped me with this.
I believe that I got it from Arlington, but that Arlington got it from this statewide school waste reduction and diversion working group that is at the state level. The Mass Department of Environmental Protection, no, sorry, that's the wrong reference. I think it's the green sword, the work at the bottom, the green sword. And also, Mass DEP is involved, and Recycling Works in Massachusetts is involved.
Does MASC have a-
I don't think they do right now. Not to my knowledge.
No, not at this time. But I think we were going to share this with the folks who are working on the policy manual to see if they were incorporating it. I did speak to my colleagues, and there are many communities that are trying to incorporate this type of policy language to drive, again, decisions at the district level. Ideally, I would rather have the conversation with the committee about this policy and that we will argue about the trays and the forks. Come to you with that and the cost.
Just don't buy any more styrofoam.
Just don't buy any more styrofoam. I got that message. And, but again, I think the policy language is, I think, would be the lens from which the school committee could oversee these efforts. I think the timing of it, the implementation of it, I think we are trying to obviously change the product in our cafeterias and then some of the, some of the operational aspects of our cafeteria as well. And again, I'm tying that to our diversity, equity, and inclusion work as a cultural aspect of our curriculum. So that's the, and I have no expertise in food service management, and so we are, I think, again, everyone has done a great job. This isn't a criticism, but we are just going to try some new things.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, this, so, do people want to talk about this? This was a first reading.
I want to talk about it.
Is my understanding, so, right.
Ms. Monaco.
I think, having read it, it sounds, it sounds like it's well done in the sense that you're not obliged to do certain things. It's more of a guide to what you can do. Is that how everyone else read it? I mean, if we adopt this policy, are we forcing ourselves to do anything, is my question?
Hi, Madam Chair.
Ms. Simon, yes.
I see it as a guide. I see it as aspirational, and that it will help us move in that direction. And as we come up with different decisions to make, I would be guided by these, this direction. And I think that, I mean, a number of the issues that you raised tonight around the styrofoam and plastics are health issues.
Correct.
And this is, this is not, this is partially health issues, but it's other issues as well. It's about health of the air and the water and the, you know, and the planet. So I think they are all connected. It's not as specific as the, does it leach into our food, as what you've been raising earlier tonight? But it goes, I feel like it's all connected. It's really about, well, if we're not going to use styrofoam because it leaches into the food, are we going to also keep using things that are going to go into the landfills that are going to leach into the soil, which is going to leach into the food, which, you know, to me, it's all connected. So I think this is a knot, this doesn't require us to do anything, but it says, this is our policy, and this is how we'd like to make decisions based on this. That's what our policies are about, to my mind.
For the sake of people that are wondering what in earth this says, there's part of it that I'd like to read.
Okay.
"The Burlington Public Schools will integrate additional resource reduction, reuse, and repair programs, where of a practical and financially feasible." So that's what I mean by, "we're not forced to do anything." "These programs may include, but are not limited to, utilizing renovations as opportunities to invest in waste reduction, like dishwashers, creating spaces large enough to accommodate dishwashers, et cetera, green purchasing practices, transitioning from single-use disposable to reusable food service ware, reduce unneeded or duplicative mailings, reusing, repairing, donating, or recycling unwanted surplus items, food recovery, including," what's share tables and donation that-
Share tables are where if a student has an apple and doesn't want to eat their apple, they could put it on a-
But it's only for foods that are wrapped?
Yes.
Okay, I get it.
Not wrapped in skin, but wrapped otherwise.
Yeah, which involves plastic, but it means you don't throw the food away.
So this actually doesn't go into any detail on composting.
Well, and it does the last thing. If you could read the last thing.
Organic collection for on or off-site composting, okay. So the composting thing, the point that I would make about composting, there are two of them. One is collection of food, it's food. So it's not damaging to the planet if it goes into, you know, a landfill or whatever. It's going to rot, and it's going to do its own thing. And I can understand the desire for, to try maybe composting, but I would hope that we don't create a problem for ourselves if we try it. I think we need to make sure, well, as I said earlier, the simple way would be for it to be collected frequently and not sitting in a, in a school, you know, collecting animals or smell or whatever. I mean, I can just see late June with the compost bins, and we're going to get a lot of complaints about it if we, if we're not very, very careful.
Just, Madam Chair, could we explain the process a little bit? Because we've done some exploring there. So Bob, would you talk about the, just the process a little bit? And then, this is the composting service. And again, not saying we have to do it, but this is what we've explored.
But how often do they pick up?
Well, I think Bob will-
As frequently as we would like. So I think you all have alluded to the great description of what the service would look like. If we choose not to compost on sites or any one of our school properties, then we would employ a service to come here. A particular one that we have quoted, and we've quoted multiple, the company would bring toters, 32, 50, or 64 gallon toters. So we choose the size. They recommend roughly a 64 gallon, one for every 100 students. And then they start off recommended pickup at a week. So basically, like, let's say here at the high school, the multiple quotes would all recommend somewhere between seven to nine toters here being picked up a minimum of once a week. Now, if we were to roll into that at a lower pace, maybe we would start with three or four toters. four toters, 64 gallon ones. What would happen is they would be lined with a compostable bag. Our students would then place compostable items into that. We would set the date. Then when they come to pick it up, the trucks that they come to pick them up with have a water tank on them. They would wheel the toters outside. Totes are a wheeled barrel like we have for our recycling bins and trash bins in Burlington. They would remove the bag, rinse the bin, and then put a new bag in, and that one service would be a cost. Now, every time that service happens is when we get hit with a bill.
Do you know how much?
Anywhere between $18 and $24, the vendors that we've been looking at.
A barrel?
Per barrel, per pickup. So a typical, if we go with the lower one, seven totes a week, $129. Five totes a week, roughly $90 a week.
Yeah, what if you wanted them twice a week?
Five totes, times two, you know what I mean? So it would be $90 and $90.
Can you change the frequency, like, let's say cooler weather, you may not have, you know, picked up as often, but when the weather gets warmer, you can increase the frequency, or does it have to be consistent throughout the year?
So you can, at least the companies that I've spoken to, they do allow you to change the frequency of it, but they do want some notice. So let's say you do have some heavy weeks where you're producing a lot of compost, and obviously you can call them and say, hey, we are experienced in high volume, and we would like an earlier pickup, or maybe add a second pickup to that, yes. If we were to call them at 4:00 today and expect them to be here at 5:00, maybe I'm, probably not going to happen, is what I'm saying. The expectation would be too high. But yeah, we definitely are allowed to change, and I think for the company, the more they pick up, the more money they make, but obviously the more compost they collect as well, too. So it's valuable for them to increase the pickup if we produce the compost waste.
Right. So you could say, in the winter, we want, once a week, and then when spring comes or the weather gets warmer, X times per week. That's what I was asking, not like, we have, you know, overabundance this week or today. I mean, do they let you change that mid, you know, by the season, I guess is what I'm asking?
I have not been told that there is a stat, what do you call it, a statistic on how frequently we can or can't change.
Okay.
They did say that they would be flexible with us.
Ms. Masardo, or, I thought?
I can talk to her.
Okay, yes.
Mr. Kuhn, just a couple of questions. Currently, food is just tossed in the trash, is that right?
Correct.
And those trash bags go in the dumpsters?
Correct.
And how often are those dumpsters dumped?
Three times per week.
Oh, three times a week, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Simon?
I wanted to just address a couple of things. One is that food waste, actually, in the, in the, the dump, the food dump
Landfill.
In the landfill, does produce a huge amount of methane, and it's actually one of the biggest carbon emissions when you look at large chunks. We look at housing, we look at buildings, we look at transportation and cars. Food waste actually produces a significant chunk. And I don't remember, I wish I remembered the statistic, but I think it's, could be as much as 20% of the carbon emissions. So it actually does damage the planet.
Doesn't it produce the same thing, no matter where it is?
No, it doesn't. When you compost food waste, it does not produce that kind of methane. I don't know if it produces none, but it's definitely not producing methane in the way that it is. So that's, that's not an advantage or a, well, we don't have to worry about it. One of the reasons why people are pushing composting so much is because it does produce a huge amount of emissions. It also, I get every other week pickup for the composting, and there's a bin with a liner, and it has a snap top, and yes, when I open it, I smell it, but when I close it, there's no smell. It's right by the door. I walk by it every day in the summer, and it does not smell. So I think that these, this company and other companies have figured out how to do it. We also have heard from other school, so other school districts are doing this, and they're not having rodent problems, and they're not having smell problems, and it is working in other districts. So I think that there's understandable concern. I think all the things you raised are very reasonable concerns, but I think, I know that there are experiences where those things are not happening. I also know that in, at least in Arlington, where I spoke to the sustainability director, the custodians are delighted. They like this because, again, if we do it right, and I think that Dr. Conti and Bob are working on this, to make a process that will be done right, there are bins for each of the different types. There's actually a separate bucket for the drainage of liquids. So the liquids are taken out before we do the composting, and so the liquids and the food is taken out of the trash, and the custodians don't have food trash in general, you know? It makes the regular trash much easier for the custo, or not much, but easier for the custodians to use. It's not that there's nothing to be done, but we do need it. So we, I think if it's well organized, and I know Dr. Conti and Bob are working on this, that it's something that needs to be done right, but the concerns that I heard you specifically mention, I don't think are things that would happen. And so I think it's, I'd liked us to continue to move forward with this, and in terms of the waste reduction policy, I think it just, it's, you know, it doesn't require us to compost, but it's saying this is the kind of thing that will help with waste reduction. It also, I believe, will save the town money because the compost is very heavy, and the liquids get taken out of the trash, and so there's less tonnage for the town to be picking up. So it could be a benefit financially, maybe not literally to the school department, but also to the town. So I think there's a lot of positives to going ahead with it, and it's, I've been thinking about it for a long time, and so it's frustrating that we can't just sign them up, you know, but we can't because we need to do it right so it doesn't smell, so that the kids know what they're doing, so that we aren't putting uncompostable things into the compost bins and teaching the kids. And, you know, Dr. Conti has said, there are students who've talked about wanting to be more friendly to the planet and take better care of the planet, and this is one of the things that we can do as a school committee to help support that and to help support our students in this way.
And Ms. Masardo, I think, were you, did you, okay, maybe I saw you wave your hand, okay. Anyone else? Okay.
Again, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, that's a first reading, so we will make sure that it gets posted, and we will have it available. I'm not sure it'll be on the 24th, it may be, but I may need to push it a meeting just because we have a, we'll have a really full meeting on the 24th as well, but we'll have a second reading relatively soon.
Okay.
I'm just not sure, it can be next meeting.
I have one other request. Since this was a first reading, I didn't think it was crucial, but the sentence here is missing. It says to adhere, in the last part of the first paragraph, "to adhere to additional sustainability programs that the Town of Burlington implements into daily practice." And it does, it says that the Burlington. So I'd like to request that we just add that the Town of Burlington. So the idea is that we would, as a district, also support any other initiatives or that the town is doing.
I got it.
But just the wording. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Ann, you got that? Awesome, thank you.
Okay, so let's move on to the last item in this section, the Assistant Superintendent Search, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Honestly, this is just informational. I have a timeline. We're going to try to stick to that. The posting closes next week, and then the, want to make sure I thank the Burlington Educators Association. They had a, I think, a meeting where they talked about qualities that they want to see in the Assistant Superintendent. Sean did a nice job of summarizing those, and he also gave me a list of people from the BEA who are interested in serving on a screening committee. So have that information, and again, want to thank Sean and the BEA for doing that work. And Joanne Faust will be coordinating the screening committees. You all have an opportunity to, again, participate as well. This is going to be a multi-step process. It's not going to be one committee and higher, so you will have opportunity to meet and discuss folks, and then I really would like to do some site visits for some finalists here as well. So again, I'll keep the committee apprised, and certainly if you want to participate, you can connect with me. But this is a rough timeline that we are working towards, again, with the hiring by sort of the end of March, first part of April.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Okay. So we'll move on to facilities and finance.
Thank you, and you're going to get a break from my voice for a while. I'm going to turn it over to Nicole.
So for our financial update, all of our revolving funds are in good standing. No concerns there, and there's not much change for operating or accommodated, and no concerns at this time.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on that? Okay.
Actually, did Mr. Moran have a chance to see this before the meeting tonight? Okay, and just if he doesn't have any questions.
I don't, but I would usually follow up with Ms. Kasha if I do.
Okay, I actually find it helpful
To hear what your kinds of questions are, because you may notice things that I don't. So, I don't know, if you want to CC me or something.
I'm happy to share them, CC the whole committee as well.
Thank you. How about the Fox Hill School Building Committee update?
Go ahead, Bob.
I have a couple of things. So through the chair, I think Dr. Conti may have mentioned earlier, prior to the meeting, but there is a form that needs to be signed by three people, Paul Segarino, Melissa Masardo, and Dr. Conti, in regards to the designer selection process, and it has to be submitted tomorrow by noon. Also, tomorrow at 1:00, there's an executive board meeting for the members that are on that, for the SBC, at 1:00. So check your emails on that and your calendar. And on the 17th, there is a designer selection committee meeting with the MSBA that starts at 8:30. Those members that will be receiving the email and the Zoom information, usually that gets sent out by MSBA two or three days before the actual meeting, so the invitation hasn't been sent out yet, but just a reminder that there is a designer selection meeting, 8:30 a.m. on January 17th. Again, we have a building meeting tomorrow night at 6:00, as a reminder, and then one at 1:00 tomorrow for a few select members. So that's it for an update.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Okay, and the last is the BHS update, please.
And again, Madam Chair, that's just a standing item. I think the, we'll have a more in-depth conversation next meeting, again, January 24th, because I think that, again, my recommendation is that we put out a proposal for a full feasibility study, and that was basically the recommendation that people have made to us, and we not wait for the MSBA. So again, we'll have that conversation moving forward. I think if we have a owner's project manager, sort of in a sense, and borrowing MSBA language, focused on this building, we've talked about creating a high school building committee, and then moving that, moving that process forward, I think, would be the way that we're going to move forward in a cost-effective and efficient manner. So I think that's important, and I think that was feedback from this committee. I also feel like that was a topic of conversation by town meeting as well, and I think they'll appreciate having a plan with some expertise attached to it. So that is my BHS update. Again, I think we'll get, we'll have more detail next meeting.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? Okay. So we do have a need to go into executive session under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the school district, and Chair so declares. And we're also going to be approving the executive minutes of October 25, 2022. And the school committee will only return to the public session for the purpose of adjournment. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call. Ms. Masardo?
Aye.
Ms. Simon?
Aye.
Mr. Faust?
Aye.
Ms. Monaco?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. We are in executive session.